We have our pages ready. And it's six thirty. So, okay. I'd like to call to order the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees meeting for September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. The meeting is called to order at six thirty. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Jan Gaffney.
Here.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Here.
Nancy Moon.
Here.
Alan Panter.
Here.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Here.
Maggie Sands.
Here.
Kristy Schell absent.
Julie Meredith.
Here.
Okay, I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is approved. At this time, we have our call to the public. If any members of the public wish to speak now, this is the moment. Yes, sir?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, could you tell us who you are?
I am David Siegler. And, why do you always have dinner out?
Every year, we try to find a good time for the board to meet. So it's after they get out of work and before it's too late in the evening.
But I suggest maybe Saturdays. However, that being said.
Yes.
If I am to speak, I did some analogy between Waterford's library and this library, and their budget is considerably less than our library. And ends of equal size, so can you give me an explanation?
We will take.
Their budget is about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, and this library is two point four million.
That is true. And we've, and we have a rolled down millage.
Could you speak a little louder?
And we have a millage that has rolled down from what was originally approved. So, and the Lake Orion.
What would be the difference between six hundred and sixty thousand and two point four million?
So, the budget that we have is actually comparable to, say, the Lake Orion Library, which is of a comparable size. Their budget is also about two and a half million, and it is similar population size. The Waterford Township Library is actually a township library that is funded out of their general fund with a, with a small supplemental millage, and it is what their taxpayers have voted for to have in place for them, so.
When I started, you know, when this was posted in the newspaper, I went to the township office to get your budget. And nobody, nobody don't have that, but you are totally independent.
We are a district library, so a district library is two municipalities that come together in order to create a library. In this case, it is the city of the village of Clarkston and Independence Township.
All right.
And it was a district library. It was created in two thousand twelve. I'm sorry?
I can't hear you.
It was a district library created in two thousand twelve. The city of the village of Clarkston and Independence Township came together in order to create a library. So Waterford Township is a, just strictly a township library. Orion Township is strictly a township library, but in two thousand twelve, the city and the township decided to come together and create a district library, which is just another legal way of creating a library.
I'm Deborah Siegler. Who, who manages the funds? How is it determined what your budget will be and how much, who gets paid, how much money, how much money is spent on books? Because hard, I didn't see very much money spent on media, meaning books such, as opposed to salaries and grants and other things. Who's, who is in charge of all of that?
This is the governing body that does that. So Independence Township and the city of the village of Clarkston appoint the library board. Five are appointed by the township board and two are appointed by the city council. And this is the governing body of the library.
So you make the budget?
Yes.
And how about the backgrounds? Do you have a financial background?
I actually have a certificate from the University of Georgia's Financial Management Program for Government.
And how about you, Ms. Sands?
I do, I have a business background. I've been employed by Walmart Corporation for nineteen years and have worked in and out of finance roles with, or, you know, part, part of my role managing my own budget, and have come to this role both to help with finances, but also help with the governance of the program. I think what's underlying your question a little bit in terms of what does the Independent, Clarkston Independence Library do is we have, the community has chosen, the board has chosen to support not only materials that people check out, but also programming for seniors, for children, for people within the community. So it's a, a very robust offering. It's not as simple as checking out books, but actually trying to be a resource to the community. And I think the board's pretty proud of how they've done that. But the good thing is, that's exactly what the meeting is for today. We have the budget out here for the, for a public discussion and to answer any of the questions. I don't think any of us here would be equipped to speak to Waterford Township's budget. That it's just nothing I've personally reviewed and that we don't do it in a comparison. We look at the like-for-like and try and make the best decisions we can about programming and books and allotments.
Deborah Siegler, my concern with this proposal of the budget and looking for an increase is that just last year, a, you had a millage that was renewed.
Yes.
I understand that. But the village renewal also goes along with house values, and there has been a significant house value increase in this area. I know that because our taxes have gone up to reflect that and our taxes, and we just received our new shortage on escrow. And so we have a concern that our taxes just keep going up and up, and we want to know why people want these increases when, from what we can see. We have to adjust our budget and many times get rid of something in order to make our budget. We can't go to anybody else and say, please, sir, can I have more money? Because we are in that situation where we don't get any more money. That is our concern, I believe, when we are both here vocalizing these concerns and who budgets it and who decides, who gets paid, how much, et cetera. We understand that it was a renewal last year, but we also understand that the house values, which gives each millage a greater dollar value. And I'm sitting down, and I'll listen to what the rest of you have to say.
That's one of the reasons the Headley Amendment was passed many years ago, was to try to protect homeowners, and that's why our original budget, our original millage, has been rolled back. So we did not ask to go back to the original millage. We took the rolled-back amount for that very reason. So we just, we did not renew the one point two five, we renewed the one point.
One six eight seven.
It's in here.
Yes. So perhaps as we go through, you'll have some answers.
You're good for now.
I think taxes across the board for everybody is a concern. I appreciate you speaking up and making sure we're staying sharp on our job, and if there's questions that you need answers to, I think we as a board are all very, very, would be very happy to help, help you find them.
Great.
Well, this is the public information now, for a minute.
Oh.
I have a couple of questions. Do your employees contribute to their healthcare costs?
Yes, twenty percent.
Vacants are only twenty percent?
Twenty percent. That's, that's standard for governmental entities. The library pays eighty percent and the employees pay twenty percent.
Now, as a teacher, you may get.
It's the standard governmental amount.
I had to buy my insurance for my family.
It's.
Okay. Lucky, every one of you are very lucky. And they're all just smiling and no one's not. Do they contribute to their life insurance?
No, that's a, an employer-funded.
And you have a line that is five thousand dollars for mileage?
We send people to meetings at other libraries in order for continuing education, and also we pay mileage if people run to the bank to do errands for the library. We keep that money in place in case people, because we want to reimburse people for their expenses. We don't have a library vehicle.
And by the way, one, just one answer, we are unpaid. We are not employees of the library.
I understand that.
Okay. So whatever our insurances are from whatever our past employment has been.
Are there any employees here from the library?
No, no.
I'm, I'm employed by the library.
She's employed.
I'm the library director.
That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. We will now call an end to the public. At seven forty-two. Six forty-two.
So, um, so we'll do the mil, the hearing on the, public hearing on the millage rate first?
Yes.
Okay. So do you want to open the public hearing on the millage rate?
So we'll now have the public hearing on the millage rate at seven forty-three.
All right.
Excuse me, six forty-three.
Okay. So, I wrote it down, that's what she said.
Okay. So in August, well, in twenty fourteen, the library's millage rate was one point two five, approved by voters. In August of two thousand twenty-two, the millage rate was renewed at its heavily rolled-down rate of one point one six eight seven. From the county, the twenty twenty-three millage reduction fraction is one point zero, so there is not a heavily rollback on the millage this year. So the village levy is one point one six eight seven. This millage was going until twenty twenty-nine inclusive.
No. In that case? No. Thank you. The public hearing is closed at, at six forty-five. We will move to the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-four budget, which will open at six forty-five.
Any specific, um, specific questions? I was going to review the entire budget during the, the general review, or do you want me to review it now?
You want, let's go with the consent agenda first and then come back to the whole budget.
And then come back to the, to the budget, that's fine.
Okay.
So we'll close the hearing at six forty-six.
Okay.
I'll accept a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. There are seven items. Does anyone wish to question any one of them? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is passed. The Friends of the Library report.
Hello, Julie, the Friends of the Library. I just have a couple of events coming up I'd like to know. Next week is our fall book sale. It runs from Wednesday until Saturday, and if you're a member of the Friends, there's a preview on Tuesday, starts at three-thirty. So please come to that, and if you can volunteer, please do volunteer, we have some open slots. Our general membership meeting is in October. This year is October nineteenth in here at seven o'clock.
Great.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. A review of library statistics.
So in the month of August, we had nine thousand one hundred and ten total visitors. We circulated twenty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-five items, six hundred and thirty-one computer users, one thousand and four information questions, seventy-four hundred total downloads, forty-two eighty-seven in terms of wireless users, eighty-six study room usages, which is actually quite a few considering school hadn't started yet. August was a slower time for children's programs. We only had eleven children's programs, but it did serve five hundred and eighty-eight children. And adult programs, we had thirty-two, and it was seven hundred and eleven programs. It is unusual for there to be more adult programs than children's programs, and so that was one of the things that Bill did want to point out, was that the adult department did more children, more programs during the month of August than the children's department. But the children's department really outdid them in July, so.
Yes.
Yeah. But it is an eleven percent increase in visitors over last year, a twenty-two percent increase in computer users, and some significant increases in terms of programming, so.
Getting back to normal.
Getting back to normal, indeed.
Yeah, those are good numbers.
Yes.
So the yearly totals up to now, then we've had one hundred and eighty-five thousand circulations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? If not, let's go to the library, do the directors' report.
In terms of a general update, since, since the library did fall victim to a fraudulent cashing of a check we sent to one of our book vendors, the administrative staff, along with Jan Gaffney, have been investigating ways to improve our financial security. Our bank's customer service representative suggested a check positive pay service. The bank offers two versions of this service. So there's a check positive pay. For each check run, we would upload and issue file to the bank that contains the issue date, check number, and amount of each check. As checks come in, the bank matches them against the issue file, and any items that are not in the file, when it's, as it's presented, are sent to us for exceptions and review. And then we would have until four P M. to mark them as pay or return, with the default being return if no decision is made. There's also check payee positive pay, which is the same as above, but the issue file also contains the payee name. Our customer service representative warned that check matching is done electronically, so if any checks are handwritten, check payee positive pay can result in additional exceptions if the reader cannot easily match the, to the check positive pay, with the possibility of switching to, because if all our checks are printed, this would not be an issue, since it's not going to be looking for handwritten. We don't handwrite, and we print all of our checks. So we've decided to implement check payee positive pay with the possibility of switching to check positive pay if we discover that we are receiving too many false exceptions. Unfortunately, none of the services offered would actually have prevented the fraudulent cashing of the check in question because it was an inappropriate endorsement that was approved by a bank other than our own. But this will assist us in preventing other types of check fraud, such as check washing or the changing of the amount on a check. The administrative staff is also developing an ACH, an electronic transactions policy, and corresponding procedure that will, that will be presented to the board for review in October to allow us to make some electronic payments to a board-approved list of vendors. We have two RFPs that will be posted in the next few days for services for the board to review. One of them is audit, and the other one is strategic planning. The Eagle Scout candidate who developed our Hammock Garden project has completed the installation. We are in the process of cataloging the hammocks for checkout and creating instructions to post near the garden. We anticipate launch of this innovative new service and an article in the Clarkston News in the next couple of weeks. The Employee Policy Committee will be returning to work finalizing a comprehensive update to the Employee Policy Manual. Meetings were suspended temporarily during the hectic summer months and also to allow for the development of the two thousand twenty-four budget. One of the things that the staffing committee had requested was a feasibility of adding some form of paid sick time for our part-time employees. DSLRT data indicates that many of the libraries in our class size do offer this type of benefit to their part-time employees. Other libraries often limit this benefit to employees that only work within a minimum number of hours per week. We use a retail model of scheduling, meaning we schedule people more hours during busier times of the year and less hours during slower times, and then also offer employees our flexible scheduling options. So replicating what other libraries are doing has been problematic. During the pandemic, a bill was introduced in Michigan that would require a minimal accrual system of sick time for all employees. While this bill has not been implemented, the system proposed within it would provide a possible solution for our situation. So the two thousand twenty-four budget has been written to potentially accommodate the addition of this benefit for our part-time staff. The Employee Policy Committee will continue their development of the manual now that it has been made financially possible to accommodate this type of change to our policy. Any questions about any of that?
Yes, very clear, thank you. Now, the review and approval of the two thousand twenty-four budget.
Okay.
I want to sleep fast.
Yeah. I wish I could do that.
Me too.
Go to sleep fast.
The millage rate is one point one six eight seven, and is not subject to a heavy rollback this year. The millage reduction correction does come from the open county's desk office. So let's just take a few minutes for you, two thousand twenty-three. We did have the addition of a collaborations librarian to act as the lead on organizations specializing in services for adults, businesses, and families, such as Parks and Parks and Seniors, assisted living facilities, the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. This person actively seeks new collaborative opportunities to improve programs and services for our residents. We did have replacement of the main HVAC unit, that's the biggest unit on top of our building. We do have four other smaller units up there that are also due to be replaced, which we will be talking about this year. We're doing a complete replacement of our outdated fire alarm system. So the fire alarm system is original to the building. The building's built in nineteen ninety-two. It is time for that to be updated, and it will allow for us to be able to connect our fire suppression system more, in a more integrated manner, to the alarm system. And we'll also put in all of those ADA accommodations that have changed over time. So for example, our fire alarms are on the walls. That was code back in nineteen ninety-two. That is not code anymore. They should now be on the ceiling, and there should be more of them, and there's changes to the way that the sirens and the horns and that sort of thing, so that's being done this year. We have maker program offerings have been expanded, including glow forge, three D printing, and silhouette, and we thank the Friends of the Library for assisting us with some of those things. We have the purchase of an additional three D printer and a sublimation printer. We've added makerspace services, including individual public use of three D printing, sublimation printing, button making, and a glow forge. The addition of the Clarkston Vault, which is a collection of unique items that can be borrowed from the library, including a telescope, energy monitor, air quality tester, and a digital film scanner.
Great.
Installation of a Hammock Garden developed and created by a local Eagle Scout candidate, which we will be launching in another week or so. The fault launch of a redesigned website. Continued improvements to the Clarkston Historic District website to assure that the community's history is archived and easily accessible, and also expanded outreach services to both schools and the community. So the guiding principles of our budget, we address the growth in library usage both internally and remotely, and that includes things that are sort of web acceptable as well, so downloadable books as well as physical books, downloadable services, that can be done remotely. We focus on fiscal management, responsible spending, and proper care of the community's assets. Improve services for our community, make data-inspired decisions using our data interface with community feedback and input to provide residents with the services they truly need and wants, and to be mindful of current competitive job market and prioritize retaining good employment. So in terms of revenue, the district library millage is one point one six eight seven, and not subject to a heavily reduction this year. So that does bring in two million five hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Stadium library has increased slightly in two thousand twenty-three, so we did accommodate that a little bit. We left the number about the same. I always, I always budget that conservatively. It comes in in two separate payments. If the state is going to, to reduce state aid, usually you get the first payment and then not the second payment if that were to happen, if their budget gets tight. Penal fines has gone down a little bit. For those who don't know what penal fines is, it is an amount of money that is in the, written in Michigan's constitution, that we get a small cut of court fees and things like that. So what I like to say is if you get a speeding ticket, a little flipper, that money does go to the library to help support literacy and things of that nature. That is county-based, and is a per capita amount of money, and it has, in my tenure here in the last almost eighteen years, it has ranged anywhere from forty thousand dollars to about seventy-five thousand dollars. This year, it came in at about fifty, which is a little bit less than last year, so I budgeted a little bit more conservatively this year, thinking that if there was any more decrease in that number, that we want to make sure that we're prepared for that and that we're not. Fines and fees is just traditionally based on history of that money coming in. Same with duplicating and photocopying and interest. And then E-Rate is a federal grant that comes in that helps to support broadband internet in the community, and that comes in about the same amount every year. Yes, sir.
What generates the ten thousand dollars in interest?
The investment of the library's fund balance and money market C D, that sort of thing, yes.
What is the balance of that fund?
The fund balance is, I believe, about two million at this point.
And how many years has that been at about two million?
The money is set aside specifically for the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan includes the upkeep of the building. So for example, the roof on the building is a ninety thousand dollar prospect, just for the flat part of the roof. The parking lot that we did, that was a three-year project, that was a half a million dollar project. So we set this money aside knowing that the building being thirty years old is going to have these expenses coming. So this past year, we did put in a large HVAC unit that came in at about forty thousand dollars. This year, we have to replace the other four units, that's another eighty thousand dollars. So we put this money aside knowing that these big expenses will come. We set some money aside from operating each year to make sure that we have that money in place so that we don't have to come back to the public and ask for additional money when we need those expenses taken here.
So that fund was created by overages on your budget over the years?
It is a, it is a savings way of doing things, so instead of.
Is it a line item then?
I'm sorry, is it a.
Is it a line item on your budget that would create and feed this fund?
Each year, we look at our budget and see if there's money that we can set aside in order to do that. So if we come in under budget on, on things, we set that money aside the following year to pay for things that are coming up. So the goal is to have the money already in place so that they don't.
I understand, cap, for the expenses.
Yes. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so for employment costs and assumptions, staffing usually accounts for fifty to sixty-five percent of a library's budget. Staffing accounted for sixty percent of the operating budget last year, and this percentage will be maintained in two thousand twenty-four. The job market continues to be competitive. Each year, the libraries, library board's staffing committee reviews DSLRT data, that's the Detroit Suburban Library Roundtable. It's an annual survey of the finances, operations, and services of all six class sizes of libraries in southeast Michigan. CIDL is a class five library, so data for libraries of a class size is used to make the decisions that help retain good employees and stay in line with similarly sized neighboring libraries. Based on this assessment, the library board's staffing committee recommends a wage increase of two percent, and so for what we want to have the minimum be twenty-five per hour for those employees that are on the lower end of the scale. During the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two, the library struggled to hire enough staff as did most employers. Some restructuring was done to accommodate these challenges, but fortunately, as library usage increases, we also find ourselves fully staffed again in two thousand twenty-three, and our budget is accordingly for two thousand twenty-four. Any questions? So in terms of wages and benefits. So in terms of wages and benefits, the wages, you'll see that number is higher than last year. That does account the additional position that we put in, that collaborations librarian, and it does include that 2% increase that we talked about. In terms of wages temporary, that's our part-time employees. That is, includes that 2% increase. There's a couple of additional employees in there part-time because we are able to be fully staffed again. And then also the talk of that, potentially that paid time off, sick time for our part-time employees, which would, we're looking at an accrual system for an hour of accrued time for every so many hours' work, and we are negotiating that right now, figuring out what would be best to fill that. In terms of retirement, that's a percentage situation, so that's calculated accordingly. Health insurance, that number is more expensive, but it is not for the reasons that you think it would be. Back in 2023, we had a number of empty positions, and so we have filled those positions again. There is an increase in health insurance costs, which we have put in there, but a chunk of that increase that you're seeing is really the fact that we were under staff. We had vacant positions. Life insurance is going down, interestingly enough. It is because our staff is younger, because we have, we have had some people that have retired, and the people that we have reconnected with are less expensive, or whatever that's called. Workers comp, we have seen a little bit of an increase there. Disability, both short-term and long-term, is also because we have a younger staff. Any questions here?
That's good.
So this is our organizational chart. The position at the top is the library director. The second line is our management team. So our full-time head of adult services, our full-time head of children and fifteen services, a full-time head of technical services, our IT manager, tech situation, and our facilities coordinator. Beyond that, those are our full-time employees that work in those various departments, and then below that is our part-time, as well as our interns. So what you see there, we have 13 full-time employees, a total of 47 employees on staff. Most of our staff is part-time. Any questions?
How many part-time staff did you mention?
We have a total of 47 employees and 13 full-time, so...
Okay, 34. That's right. I was gonna, I was making sure.
Somebody had to do that.
Thanks, man, people.
So these are the operating costs, and we have that in front of you, so I'm going to go through some of the significant changes from '23 to '24. Staffing costs adjusted in response to a competitive wage market, inflation, and the DSLRG data. With a wage increase of 2%, staff cost will be maintained at 60% of the operating budget as it was last year, which is well within the appropriate range for library. Increases and decreases in the various insurance and benefits costs based on anticipated premium changes and staffing changes, which we discussed briefly. An increase in the audit fees reflecting anticipated change in our previous contract, which does expire, and we will be rebidding this service, so we're not sure what that's going to cost, so we did put in a little extra money because we're not sure what that service will cost this year. An increase in conferences and workshops. This is in response to the reliance exclusively on virtual training for the last few years, and that has been receding, and we're seeing more in-person conferences and trainings return, as well as in-person meetings. So we're still doing some webinars and some virtual training, but we do want to keep our staff well-trained, and so we want to make sure that we have money for the site to do that. The building around maintenance budget includes a significant increase of everything in the budget is the biggest increase. The library building is now over 30 years old, so maintenance is crucial to protect the community's investment. The library maintains a detailed capital improvement plan and maintenance schedule. We also have a capital improvement subcommittee that just go over that every year. The library's board committee reviews these documents with the library staff to assist in prioritizing projects. This year's budget includes a number of maintenance projects that happen on a cycle other than on a annual basis, such as parking lot resealing and a comprehensive fire suppression test, which are done every three years. So the nice thing about this capital improvement plan, it is literally, and those that are on the committee test, it's a seven-page document that is basically everything in the building, all the fixtures and everything, and we have the date that everything was put in, and the dates that any changes have been made to it, any updates have been made to it. There are notes indicating when we anticipate things will need to be updated, and then there are priorities of one, two, and three. So anything that has a priority of one and it is in your board packet are things we're looking at within the next year to two years. Anything with a priority two are things that in the next three to five years. Anything with a priority three is something that we've done recently, but we always keep an eye on everything because you just never know when something's going to break. Any questions about that? So the building budget consists of operational funds that are being earmarked for use in a capital investment project. As many contractors are extremely busy, we have identified four projects to be prioritized in 2024 that will be executed as we are able to do so. So replace the small, four smaller HVAC units. Renote and address plumbing issues in the lobby and bathroom. A generator, a whole building generator is something that we've been wanting to use for three years. That's going to have a lead time, a pretty significant lead time on it, but we would like to have that in place because we do have the community that relies on it for power. Soon as the power, we always know when power goes out of town, because the first thing that happens is that everybody calls and says, "Do you have power?" Because they want to come over here and be here, recharge their phones, use their laptops, continue working if they're...
Stay warm. I've used it to stay warm.
So we have been very fortunate the last year or so, being able to keep the power going, but a whole building generator is on that list. And then space planning for some of the librarian offices to address some storage issues. Those offices are original to the building in 1992. They were designed for a lot of paper storage, so we're looking at the possibility of repurposing the desks and things that are there, but pulling out the storage pieces that are primarily that paper, since we do have a system by which we digitize our records, and changing that over the storage that is more conducive to the kind of things they need, like shelving and drawers to put things in, as opposed to lateral files and vinyl cabinets and things of that nature. Not all of the funding is currently included in this line item. Obviously, as I said before, operating funds are used first, but the library also has a capital improvement fund, which may specifically set aside to pay for these major capital projects. Needed budget adjustments will be made from that fund into a, when each project is ready to be executed. So for example, we do know that that generator project, we have to have an electrical plan drawn up and then decide how big that needs to be. The lead time on a generator is, at this particular moment, last time we talked, 52 weeks. So we order it, and it'll be 52 weeks worth of time. It could be quite a lengthy process.
Yeah.
Any questions about that? Okay. Equipment also includes a significant increase, including in your packet, the library maintains a three-year technology plan. This allows for proactive planning regarding the replacement of heavily-used computers and servers. Each year, approximately one-third of the library's electronics are evaluated for plan replacement. This year includes the replacement of multiple servers, which is a more expensive project than what needed to be addressed in the past two years, which were just straight computers, laptops, and desktops and things like that. So we do have servers that need to be replaced.
And that includes the technology both for staff and for use by the public?
Yep. Yep. So normally, when we're doing straight computers, what we usually do is split it. It's some for the public and some for the staff. This year, we have some, we have what we call a break fixed budget set aside, so that if anything, and those computers tend to break unexpectedly, we have the money set aside to replace those. But this year is servers, and so you'll see a bid process for that, and you'll see quoting on that.
Yeah, I'd like to see...
Do we, I'm sorry, Jan, go ahead.
No, just when she said bid process, you know, I always perk up when you start talking about a bid process, because that's how I like to see things done.
Do we wait until computers break to replace them, or do we replace them on a planned basis?
Well, yes and no. So the answer is yes to both. Basically, what we do is we keep a really close eye on our computers. The ones that are most heavily used, they, when they get to their third-year cycle, they're usually ready. But we don't just discard them. What we usually do with them is recruit them for some other place in the building that has a lesser use. So for example, it may become one of the pack stations where people use the computer to look up things in the catalog, which is not as heavily used as, for example, the computer that is used by our IT guy who is controlling all the servers in the building. His computer, obviously, is very heavily used and needs to be replaced, usually within a three-year cycle. But his computer can then be used for another purpose. We keep a very close eye on them and sort of rotate them around. So it's very seldom that we don't get every ounce of life out of something only by a computer. Any other questions? So this is the full budget, all laid out. So revenues are at the bottom. The staffing and the cost and the operations are in the middle. So just to review the big projects around the horizon, the primary projects outlined by the capital improvement subcommittee, replacing those four smaller HVAC units, the men's room plumbing, and here in the lobby restroom, generator, space plant for the library and offices. Other suggested possible projects that we may get to, if time allows, or that we may slot in, and for some reason, one of these primary projects becomes unusable this year, we can't get a contractor to do it, or we can't get the thing that we need, the sign in the driveway, not the whole sign, but just the inserts for it, which is not a huge expensive project, but something that does need to be addressed. The meeting on kitchen appliances, the stove, the dishwasher are original to the building. The refrigerator is from 2001, so we get our life expectancy out thanks to the rest of our loyalty. The public restrooms, we would like to address some of the ADA. They are ADA compliant from 1992, but we have had some people in the community point out to us that in real-world usage, they are not as ADA compliant as they could be. So one of the things that we will be doing as we address that men's room plumbing this year is looking at ways that we can upgrade that restroom, trying out some things and looking into that, and also pricing for potentially in 2025, some further public restroom updates that will allow for that. And then space planning in the IT office is something that we would like to do, but that is a little bit less pressing once and again. Any questions about any of that? And then in terms of final comments, community engagement, collaboration, and outreach continue to be top priorities for the library board and staff as library usage continues to grow. Maintaining and improving the library building as an important community investment is also always a priority. Recognizing that our community wants library services both in-person and virtually will guide our decisions and offerings, and our goal is to focus on our residents' needs and input in order to provide robust, innovative library services. End of my presentation. Any other questions? I would be happy to...
Why does the library need kitchen appliances for a meeting room?
Because we rent out this room, and the people that use this room, these staff members.
Cook? They cook?
They warm things up and that sort of thing, yeah. The staff room doesn't have an oven, but there is an oven in here for that purpose.
Well, some of the programs involve those...
People who rent it.
It's part of what makes this room rentable. It's part of what people are looking for when they want to rent a room. That's a revenue stream for the library to have.
And why does the library have to have a program that includes 3D printers, et cetera? Isn't that a program for like a tech building or a high school that is into technology or into more into someplace else that was computer-oriented programming?
We're actually doing this for all ages, whereas the high school is specifically for students. So this is something that all ages can attend. So the library's, one of the library's goals is to be lifelong learning, and so we are offering services and programs and educational opportunities across the lifespan for people to be able to attend without having to take an expensive class or to just try something out. So actually, a lot of these makerspace things that we've got in here are things that the Friends of the Library do help us fund, and they subsidize a lot of those programs extensively. So for example, we added board games to our collection, and the Friends of the Library completely funded that. They buy, they bought our first 3D printer, and we put programs out, and they've been very, very popular, so we bought a second 3D printer in order to accommodate that. They're really popular among all ages, and they're great game performance.
So, just for an example, if I had a new part for an old, old toy...
Yep.
Could I come here and add a duplicate of a 3D printer?
You could. You absolutely could. So you could...
See you tomorrow.
You can go in and, actually, there's a lot of places online where you can find the electronic files to print things in 3D. And so you can come, just like when you come in to print out a tax form or an email to a friend, you can come in, and we have a printer, and you would print out a piece of paper. Now we have a 3D printer, and you can come in and print that out. Now it takes a little longer, so we set the file up, and you'd have to come and pick it up the next day. And then the fee is just the cost of the, in the same way that you pay for the paper when you do a printout, you would pay for the cost of the cover that you used to create it. So it defrays the cost of it.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I didn't know about any of these programs. How is it that the public knows?
So we've been publicizing it. This is a relatively new service that we have where the public can come in and do that. That was new in 2023. It goes on our social media, it's in our newsletter, it's a partnership that puts in a magnet that you get. We have pages in there, and it tells you everything that the library has to offer that's out in there.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
And we do have every year in August, a public workshop where we go through all of these numbers and discuss them in the board. So it's not a televised meeting, but it is in the paper, it's publicized, and at any time, the public can come and join us while we're working through what needs to be increased, what can be decreased, what's being used, what's not being used. Because as things become obsolete, you know, you don't see as many, let's just say DVDs, for example, if people are streaming and so forth. So as certain items become less used, then we direct our funding to things that are more used. And for some of us, we don't know what's being used if we're old enough.
How many people come to those meetings that you publicize?
Very few.
And how large is that article in your local newspaper?
It's the standard legal posting that you see in the paper. It's that public notice that you see. And it's also posted at the library.
Maybe post the newspaper to have, you know, come to the meeting and make it more of a public event rather than, or public news item rather than just a public notice, because not everybody reads those. We're retired, and...
The print is so fine.
Well, that you can talk to the newspaper about.
Well, like Deborah suggested, an absolute article that would be submitted by the board to the newspaper, and sure to be printed. Like the wolves win the last championship. Friends of the Library is going to tell you how much money they're going to spend this year. Come on to the meeting.
So that's why it, that's why it is open to the public. And now you know that every year in August, we'll be doing this. So you can keep an eye out for that and come join us. It's a more casual affair, so we, it's a workshop. So we're, we spend two or three hours working our way through all of these things.
So don't miss the point about submitting articles rather than...
Just a tiny thing.
No, two inches, a tiny... No, they didn't.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right. In that case, I will accept a motion to do several things. So first, we will review and approve the millage rate as presented. So do I have a motion to approve the millage rate?
I move to approve the, approve the resolution setting the millage rate as presented.
Second. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution setting the millage rate as presented. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Alison McVad and Kiesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Alan Panther?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Maggie Sands?
Yes.
That motion has been approved. Now I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution establishing the library budget as presented.
I make a motion...
I make a motion to approve the established library budget as presented.
I'll second that one.
So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution establishing the Clarkston Independence District Library 2024 budget as presented. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Alison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Alan Panther?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Maggie Sands?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. Finally, accept a motion to approve the updated wage ranges in the 2024 wage schedule.
I move that we approve the updated wage ranges in 2024 wage schedule as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the updated wage ranges in the 2024 wage schedule as presented. Any questions or comments? Those who wish to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion is approved. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have to look at the approval of the 2024 closed date calendar.
So, each year, the library board is asked to review and approve the library's closed date calendar. This proposed calendar is the same as previous years. It does not currently include a closure for a staff training day, as we have not determined when we would like to do this in 2024. It has traditionally been in the fall, but we will request a closure well in advance after we have had a chance to investigate presenters and their availability. The staff is also talking about the possibility, instead of doing an entire closed day, of doing some smaller programs, trainings, instead of doing an entire day-long thing, because a day-long thing is really a lot. So, yeah, so doing smaller trainings. So, that's the other reason there isn't a date on there, a specific date.
Okay, is everybody looking at the closed date calendar? Which is in front of you. Do you have a copy of that?
It's in the packet. I didn't, I didn't put it out with the...
Agenda item.
Were there any questions or comments about that? Okay. In that case, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve the 2024 closed date calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Who is the second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the closed date calendar as presented. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nays. Motion is carried. And at this time, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn. Oh, no. I don't, oh, sorry, question.
Before you adjourn, what is the millage rate that you're going to ask for? Or aren't you trying to ask for a rate increase?
No. We can't ask for a rate increase. We are asking for the 1.1687.
Well, it was my, excuse me, but it was my understanding from the way the article was written in the paper that you were going to propose a millage increase and work before the...
Oh, no, no, no. So, that's actually the required legalese, and what they're saying is that we are presenting our millage rate. We're not asking for an increase at all. We're asking for what we are permitted to request. I'm sorry, that was a confusing thing for you. It's, it's, the law is...
I understand.
That's the way it's written, but that, we're not allowed to change the wording of that. It sounds like it's an increase, but it's not.
So, we did, we rolled it, Hedley rolled it down, and that's what we asked for the approval of. When Hedley rolled it down, that's last year what we asked for the approval of, and that's what the vote approved, the rolled-down millage.
Anything else, we would have to go out to the voters again. We can't, no.
Oh, no, no.
That's not decided at this level. That's decided by the voter, voters.
So, we can propose something, but we won't be doing that for another, how many years?
2029. Well, 2030, because 2029 is inclusive, so it won't be on the ballot until 2030. So, Hedley will, if, when property values increase, Hedley will roll the library's millage down. And it's, this is actually an unusual year. I've been here for seventeen years, and this is the first time we've not had a Hedley roll-down on our millage rate of some sort. Once Hedley rolls it down, it does not roll back up when pop property values, if property values go down. Hedley only rolls millages down. In order to override a Hedley roll-down, we would need to go to the voters and ask for an increase. So, if we wanted to go back to 1.125, we would actually have to go to you and say, "We would like to increase our millage back to the original 2014-approved rate of 1.25." So, that, the, what goes into the paper in terms of the millage rate approval is a little bit misleading because it says it's an increase when really we're just asking for the millage rate as it is defined.
We read that article, the same day we had our escrow shooting.
Well, I apologize for that. The attorney writes that language, and I have no ability to make it clear. So, I, it is really frustrating because I know it's confusing to people, but unfortunately, that's what the law says it has to say. So, yeah.
But we're glad that you came and asked.
I'm sorry that it created stress for you, thinking that that's what was happening tonight, though.
There was no stress. It raised a lot of questions.
Well, and I'm glad we were able to answer them for you.
That's healthy.
Yeah.
She pays the bills.
So, at this moment, we are adjourned.
No, move to adjourn.
That's right. We haven't voted.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Currently adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion is passed, and we are adjourned at 7:28. That's okay.